Counselor Consal. Counselor Lamatina.
Here.
Here.
Counselor O'Malley. Presley. Counselor Ross. Yancy. Counselor Yancy.
I'm informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. I'd ask all counselors and all in attendance to please rise as I have the honor to introduce City Councilor Mark Siomo, who will introduce Reverend Richard Fitzgerald of St. Callum Kill's Church in Brighton, who will deliver today's invocation. After Father Fitzgerald delivers today's invocation, I would ask all to remain standing as Counselor Siomo will lead us in a salute to the flag. City Councilor Mark Siomo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have the great joy of introducing somewhat of a newcomer to our community, but born in South Boston, made his way through Dorchester and West Roxbury, led parishes in Peabody, Milton, and Wellesley, worked for the Department of Defense for 11 years, attended the Blessed John 23rd Seminary in Western. This is a seminary for second career vocations, and he became an ordained priest in 1987. And the neighborhood of Boston-Brighton has embraced him warmly. He's a wonderful man, and it's with great pleasure that I introduce Father Richard Fitzgerald, otherwise known as Father Fitzie.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Let us pray.
Dear God, we stand before you conscious of our weakness, but aware that we gather in your name. Enlighten the hearts of all in this council chamber. Give us light and strength to know your will. Guide us by your wisdom and support us by your power. You desire justice for all. Enable this council to uphold the rights of others. Let it be faithful to all that is true. Do not let it be misled by ignorance or corrupted by fear or favor. Let the light of your divine wisdom direct the deliberations of this council and shine forth in all its proceedings. May the decisions of this council preserve peace, promote happiness, and continue to bring us the blessings of liberty and equality. May these decisions be pleasing to you and earn the reward promised to good and faithful servants, for you live and reign one God forever and ever. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Father Fitzgerald, for your inspiring words. Please join with Counselor Siomo as together we salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Counselor Siomo will escort clergy from the chamber. The chair would like to at this time recognize City Councilor Mike Ross, who has a brief presentation before the meeting of the city council. Counselor Ross.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to have my colleague Counselor Tito Jackson join me up here. Today is the 13th Annual Survivor of Homicide Victims Awareness Month, and so we've had a meeting in the Curly Room with survivors of homicides, families who've lost family members. I'd like to invite Tina Sherry up here to accept the resolution on behalf of the larger community, and I know that Cindy Diggs and others, we'd like to have you up here as well. I thought I saw Ms. Mendez as well, and Ms. Mendez, it would be great to have you here. Really, all three, four, if you feel compelled, please join us. Please come up here with us, representing the broader community that has lost family members to violence. It's unfortunate that we have to have this commemoration. We've lost so many victims that we have created a month where we support the families who've lost their family members to violence. All of us, in some ways, have been through this, and this is that month. And even though this month, we think about what this means as a city, the family members who've lost their loved ones to violence think about it every day, and every hour, and every minute, and it's not just a once-a-year event. So we commemorate that, and we memorialize that, and that is what today was all about. I have a resolution that I want to give to really the community, but to do so, I'm going to give it to Tina Sherry, and rather than read this, I'd rather have her say a few words about what today means to her on behalf of the broader community, and then I'll invite my colleagues up to take a photo with us together. Tina?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, and it's an honor to be here. We are all survivors, and while this is an awareness month for families of homicide victims, we all come from different class culture, and we're here in Boston honoring the awareness month, yet this is a statewide month, and we have a calendar of events where a lot of activities and educations are going on. So for those of you that are here, go back to your community and just see if anyone within your community has been impacted by violence, and honor and support and celebrate them. And we thank this council member, this chambers, for just acknowledging who we are and not forgetting that with each homicide, families are left behind, and we are contributing to the betterment of our community. We thank you, and we leave you in God's name.
Thank you.
Oh, well, you're small. You're small. Richard, you're small.
All the small people to the point.
Oh, look. Yes.
We're here with Cannon.
Ladies, come on.
Yeah, come on over.
We're all in this together. Are we going to sing? "We are survivors, ain't got no sense." Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
The clerk informs me that since roll call, we've been joined by Arroyo, Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Jackson, Counselor Presley, Counselor Conley, and Counselor Ross. So we have a full house here today. There are no corrections to be made from the minutes to last meeting. The minutes would stand approved, seeing and hearing. No corrections or objections to be made. The minutes are so approved. Madam Clerk, would you change the order and go to the communication from Corporation Council Bill Senate and begin the meeting with that communication?
The letter dated November 7, 2013, from the Law Department of the City of Boston. Dear Madam Clerk, attached, please find a copy of a letter I sent to Council President Stephen J. Murphy today concerning the vote taken by the city council, reporting to amend a loan order for an appropriation of $4,137,330 for the purpose of paying costs of a feasibility study and schematic design work associated with the Josiah Quincy Upper School/Boston Arts Academy, projected to be located at Apostle 25 in Chinatown. Sincerely, William F. Senate Corporation Counsel.
Would you read?
Docket number 1794, Communication from His Honor the Mayor. Message in order to withdraw an appropriation filed on October 9, docket number 1599, and submits a new appropriation for $4,137,330 for the purpose of paying costs of a feasibility study and schematic design work associated with the construction of the Josiah Quincy Upper School/Boston Arts Academy, projected to be located at Apostle 25 in Chinatown.
Speaking on the matter, docket 1794, the chair recognizes Counselor Mark Siomo.
Thank you, Mr. President. In order to leverage the MSBA's reimbursement rate of 74% for this project, which would result in a net cost to the city of $968,000, we must fund this loan order so that the team working on the Mass School Building Authority submission can complete the work in time for consideration. Without funding the work on the submission, this submission will be on hold indefinitely. This capital loan order requires two votes, two weeks apart. Since we have no meeting next week, I will ask for suspension of the rules today so that we can take our first vote now and our second vote on December 4. The order requests approval for the appropriation of $4,137,330 for a feasibility study and schematic design work for the combined Josiah Quincy Upper and Boston Arts Academy. As you will recall, Ways and Means held a hearing on October 29 on this matter under the previous order, docket 1599. Since that time, docket 1599 was withdrawn by the mayor following concerns that the council took an improper action. The mayor has resubmitted the loan order. The funding requested will enable Boston Public Schools and the MSBA to assess the feasibility of a downtown Boston high-rise high school. As chairman of Committee of Ways and Means, I recommend to the full council that we suspend the rules, read this order for the first time, and assign it for further action. Docket number 1794. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Siomo. Chair recognizes Counselor Mike Ross.
Mr. President, I've been in receipt of a letter from the Boston Finance Commission that I just received within the last hour, and I think the members of the city council have. I would ask, with your consideration, could the short letter, could the clerk read the letter into the record?
If we had it, we could.
I have it here. I'm happy to provide it. Mr. President?
Sure.
Thank you.
The City of Boston Finance Commission, November 20, 2013, regarding city council vote for funding downtown school feasibility study. In May of 2012, the Finance Commission submitted a letter supporting a Boston Public School plan to move several school populations in an attempt to increase the number of seats available in performing schools. The plan included moving the students of Mission Hill K8 to the Agassi School so that that building they could occupy at 67 Allegheny Street would be able to be renovated and accommodate the students from the Fenway High School. Fenway High School shared a building at 174 Ipswich Street with Boston Arts Academy, so moving the Fenway population would allow Boston Arts to expand at 174 Ipswich Street property. This plan seemed to emerge after an original plan to close High Park High School had to be revised due to Massachusetts School Building Authority reminder that closing the recently renovated High Park High would require the city to reimburse significant revenues to the state. After several very emotional public hearings, the plan was approved. It was with this history in mind that the Finance Commission was surprised to learn of the school department's plan to build a new downtown school that would include the Boston Arts Academy only 17 months after the plan to expand at 174 Ipswich Street property was approved. The Finance Commission has several concerns regarding the announcement of this new school. One, we are uncertain as to the justification for vacating and selling the 174 Ipswich Street building, a property that the state signed over to the City of Boston with the intent of its being an educational facility. Two, had Boston Arts Academy stated their intentions to build a new school in the spring of 2012, Fenway High School could have stayed at 174 Ipswich Street, and Mission Elementary could have remained at the Mission Hill location. This would have avoided upsetting the lives of many Boston Public School students and their families. Number three, Boston Public Schools has stated that one of the most significant costs of building downtown schools is the land acquisition, yet no land acquisition costs would be incurred by maintaining the Boston Arts Academy or any other school at 174 Ipswich Street property. This building is located in a community that has planned growth of 2,480 new housing units and does not seem to have another large city-owned lot to accommodate any future schools. The city has not adequately articulated their reasons to sell this property. Number four, due to the complexity of the proposed new school location, the investment that will be required in infrastructure costs to reroute a high-pressure water line and build decking that will safely support the new structure over the tunnel will be considerable. The Finance Commission consulted a construction industry professional who estimated that these costs could run as much as $60 and $75 million. Number five, the search for potential sites for the new downtown school could have been more complete. Several larger city-owned parcels in the investment area are at the Roach Playground and the City of Boston Transportation Tow Lot. Both of these properties would eliminate the cost of acquiring land, and the tow lot could be moved to a City of Boston location further from downtown. Additionally, all EDIC and VRA sites should have been part of this search, but do not appear to have been considered. Number six, the proposed Neyland Street location of the new school, Apostle 25, is next to South Station and between major exchange ramps for Route 93. Given that the Josiah Quincy Upper School and the Boston Arts Academy are citywide schools, the addition of school buses to this area and the Boston Arts Academy are citywide schools, the addition of school buses to this area will potentially cause gridlock in an already congested area. It does not appear that any consideration has been given to this possibility. Number seven, it has been publicly stated that the BAA needs to be near the Theater District to be successful, but there does not seem to have been any data-driven public analysis for the basis of this statement. The Boston Arts Academy has been a very successful school in the Ipswich Street location for many years, despite its location outside the Theater District. A more detailed justification for this benefit needs to be provided. The city council has the right to question the expenditure of the feasibility study and the plans at 174 Ipswich Street. The City of Boston should be invested in new educational facilities. However, this project should be part of a long-term, comprehensive plan, and these decisions should not be made in haste. Given that this is potentially a $261 million project, a request for $4.1 million for a feasibility study seems small. However, this $4.1 million could be used to fund other valuable city efforts, such as after-school programs. The city's determination to spend this money on the feasibility study instead should be supported by more detailed data-driven justification than has been provided to date. Further, this building project is the most costly-proposed school in the state of Massachusetts history, and for that reason alone, the proposal deserves a reasonable amount of time for consideration. It says very truly yours. It is not actually signed, but it states it's from Matthew A. Cahill, Executive Director.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counselor Ross.
Mr. President, signed copies have been delivered to each of the members of the city council. The Boston Finance Commission is a watchdog independent agency that thinks, acts, and operates on its own with appointees from the governor and the mayor and others in our city, and they're raising very serious concerns about the most expensive school in the history of Massachusetts that this council is seeking to move as quickly as possible through the body by the chair's previous comments. I heard in that letter the very comments that my colleagues have said over these last few months and years about the lack of planning in the Boston Public Schools. In fact, I've heard it from many of the proponents, how they're actually the ping-pong in this back-and-forth that is really, at its heart, a process that's been lacking because there is no process. We are all in a horrible situation with advocates who wish to have us move forward with this loan authorization because of the lack of planning. That's how we got here, and I just simply don't think that the answer is to put our head down and ram forward. For one thing, this council took a vote two weeks ago. Whether you approved or supported that vote in the minority, or whether you supported that vote in the majority, that vote was a binding vote of this city council. And while it very well may be the opinion of the mayor's lawyer, Corporation Council, that improper action was taken, I am sure we could find an opinion that says it's okay for the Boston City Council to condition its support around authorizing funds with certain conditions. It's exactly what we did. So whether you supported that initial vote or not, now there's a new question for you to consider. And I look to my colleague that sits next to me, and although it may not seem it, I occasionally listen to what he has to say, and what the dean of this council has been saying for years is that we have a power-sharing structure here in Boston, and while we may not always act it, we in fact are the legislative body to the mayor, and we share the power with the mayor. And when this council takes a vote, a majority vote, whatever that is, you may like it, you may not like it, but in the end, that vote is now our vote for the entire council. And when we're told that the administration can now pick and choose, can nullify that vote, can just reject that vote on a legal opinion, and not come back with an accommodation of what the council has asked for, that's a larger issue outside of this very issue around the school. It's an issue around the notion of sharing the power that this council participates in. And if every time we voted on something, the administration could come back and just strike it down on legal grounds, where would that lead us? And maybe more to the point, if even you agree that legally there might have been an issue with the last vote two weeks ago, well, surely the administration could have come forward and said, "Look, we know it wasn't written correctly. Here's what we're going to do. We're going to keep the Fenway on Ipswich Street indefinitely, as you've requested, and we'd like you to revoke the loan order." They didn't do that. Had they done that, this could have passed today, and that $4 million study would be underway, at least the first vote would be, notwithstanding the concerns that have been raised by Matt Cahill, Finance Commission. But they didn't do that. They just came back with the exact same thing that they offered this council two weeks ago and ignored the vote of this council two weeks ago. Some of you want to be president next year because the president's term is up. This is the issue that you're going to have to come up with from time to time, is what is the council's role in sharing the power of this city? Is it to be told that you're wrong? Is it to be told that you are irrelevant? Because that's effectively, Mr. President, what's before us today. I object and appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ross. Chair recognizes Counselor Charles Yancy.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I expressed my concerns about this proposal pretty comprehensively, very comprehensively in the past. I believe that this body acted improperly by rejecting a loan order for $115 million to build a new high school on a college-campus-like environment at the former Boston State Hospital site, service all the people, all the students of Boston. And while it's located in Madera Pan, where a much larger number of high school students in the Boston Public School system live than this proposal, the new high school on that site with service will be available for all Boston Public High School students. So, Mr. President, what does that have to do with what's before us? Well, we've heard that this proposed high school will cost a minimum of $260 million, and we've been told time and time and time again by the chair of the Ways and Means Committee that we could not afford $115 million to build a new high school in Boston as recently as June of this year. The Boston Public Schools sent their communications to each member of this body, saying that investing in building a new high school at this time would be a poor use of public dollars. Of course, I was outraged when we received our communications, and quite frankly, I was quite surprised and a little disappointed that many of our colleagues did not share my outrage. How can anyone say investing in a new high school is not a good use of public dollars? But that's exactly what was in that communications. I learned later that a mon- I learned later that a month after that communications, the school department saw the light and they came up with this plan to build a new high school, not at the Boston State Hospital site where we have 14 acres of land, but at a downtown site where they have only one acre of land available. So that's point number one, Mr. President. I do have concerns with the appearance of contradiction and hypocrisy. The second concern relates to the communications from our Corporation Council. And with all due respect to the expertise of the Corporation Council for the City of Boston, I believe that there's a fundamental inaccuracy in that communications. The Senate says that the City Council has is only authorized to approve, reject, or reduce this order. If we, Mr. President, you know this, if we were talking about the operating budget, I would agree 100% with the Corporation Council. But we're talking about a loan order, and one of the few areas where the City Council can initiate an appropriation has to do with a loan order. And that includes the authority to, yes, approve, reject, or reduce, but we can also increase loan orders for for that purpose. So I challenge the Corporation Council on that very important point. And finally, Mr. President, I believe this, like other orders, would require unanimous consent to be acted upon today and ask that you rule on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Yancey. Chair recognizes Counselor Bill Linehan.
It amazes me that we could be at this point about such a productive investment for a downtown school so that a particular interest can weigh down a $4 million, not $250 million loan order to do a feasibility study on a school that schematically has been accepted by the Public Schools Authority, which could absolutely mean 75% of the money get reimbursed by the state for this investment in our downtown school, which there was no attachments to anything. We were talking about the downtown elementary school in somebody else's district. Now it's taking on the presidency of the next session, and now it's taking on the Finance Commission. Where was the Finance Commission two weeks ago? Where was the Finance Commission after we received that from the designation from the Public School Building Authority? Where was the Finance Commission then? And when does the Finance Commission editorialize about six other issues when we're talking about a loan order for a feasibility study on Neyland Street downtown for $4 million? Personally, I think it's all a lot of crap. It's that there's an agenda to tie a particular interest so that another particular interest can't move forward because we cannot have our way. And then there's added interests that are legitimate, but this is a feasibility study. This is not, we're not talking about a loan order for a quarter of a billion dollars. We're talking about $4 million. We already had $14 million put aside from mitigation from a downtown development for the Quincy Upper School. And this generated by site location for the Quincy Upper School because the place that it is now cannot expand within reason to where it's located. And what do we do there? If we do build a high school and the Boston Arts Academy is also located at that site, only blocks away from the Theater District, then we'd have another school available, a downtown school, a downtown school that we so need. So I look forward to representing more of the downtown and to continue to fight for schools in the area. I find that this particular loan order for $4 million finding its way into the quagmire of a bunch of other issues related to the Boston Public Schools Department and the entire infrastructure improvements and assessments and plan. I find it that it didn't get in the way of other allocations. And I'm not sure if I'm right. I think it was $9 million. My my memory serves me right for the acquisition of the property over in Lovejoy Wath area, if I'm not mistaken. I mean, can anybody correct me on that? Oh, $13 million. Thank you. 13 million. This is less than one-fourth of that, one-third of that. So I I'm offended that we're going to block this. I understand how how it got to this point. And this project, I vow to the to all the folks that are in here that want to see this thing move forward, that are behind me. I got hundreds and hundreds of signatures from parents from the Quincy Upper School to see this happen because something didn't go right during a term of a city councillor, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Linehan. Chair recognizes Counselor Mark Ciomo.
I want to reiterate a few things that Counselor Linehan said. You know, I have great respect for Matt Cahill and what he does, and I rely on him a lot through these past five years of very difficult fiscal challenges for the city. But this loan order is for a feasibility study, and a feasibility study would give you the data needed to continue to look at this. So I I just want, I know it's objected to, it's going back to committee, but I just thought that needed to be said, that, you know, we want those questions answered, and that's why we have a feasibility study to determine those answers, I hope. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ciomo. Chair recognizes Counselor John Connolly.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't even know where to begin on this one because we know part of where we are today grows out of the vote a little over two years ago, I think. And I have, you know, publicly spoken about my very conflicted feelings about my initial vote, my desire to change that, my vote a week ago I felt right about, and yet I keep going back and forth. I want to say this, off the bat, I commend Counselor Ross for his great leadership and his strength through all of this because what Counselor Ross wants is to make sure that there's a school in Mission Hill in a wonderful building that was meant to be an elementary school. And that's been his charge, and I commend him on it. And he's right in fighting on that. I regret my initial vote because I felt that my vote uprooted the very successful Mission Hill Pilot School and moved them, and we shouldn't have been moving a school that was successful and doing a good job. That wasn't what we should be doing. By the same token, as I thought about my vote last week and through today, realized that that vote was not going to bring Mission Hill Pilot back to Allegheny Street, wasn't going to do that. And that in fact, when we look at what this vote is, it is a vote for a feasibility study on Arts Academy and Quincy Upper going to parcel 25. That's what this is a vote on. I want to make sure that our Performing Arts High School has world-class performance space. I want to make sure that the Quincy Upper School gets the space that it has been waiting for for years and years. And therefore, I will support this, although I recognize we're going to go to hearing and we'll we'll get everything out. But without seeing a major change on that, I'm going to vote on a feasibility study to look at whether or not this should go forward, but I'm going to support that. And I'll just say, as I went back and I looked through and I looked at all the data, and I looked at Allegheny Street, and I typed in, if you lived on Allegheny Street and you were going for a K-2 seat, you have six schools that come up within one mile of where you live, six schools that come up within your one-mile walk zone, including the Tobin, which is a Mission Hill school. And what we should be doing is focusing on making the Tobin a Level One school and focusing on the quality there and making that the school for Mission Hill and for those who for whom it comes up in their basket. And then from there, we ought to be looking at Arts Academy and making sure we can get world-class performance space for our Performing Arts High School and our Visual Arts High School. And and the same for the Quincy Upper and give the Quincy Upper the space that it deserves so that it can have the type of facility that will really allow the Quincy from the very beginning to the very last grade to be that phenomenal high school. And so, look, I don't think there's anything about this vote that's easy because I understand where Counselor Ross is coming from. But I also understand where the folks from Arts Academy and Fenway and Quincy Upper are coming from. And I look at this, this is an appropriation for a feasibility study to see if this can work and is the right thing to do, so I will support it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Connolly. The clerk will read 17D of the City Charter.
I'll just read the section.
Just the section that applies, Madam Clerk.
Section 17D, mayoral approval of City Council action. Every order, ordinance, resolution, and vote authorizing a loan or and appropriating money or accepting a statute involving the expenditure of money which is returned to the council shall be void.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That certainly answers one of the questions that was raised during the debate. Counselor Ross has objected to the moving of suspension and passage, which under our rules requires that Doc at 1794 be remanded to Ways and Means for further action. Counselor Yancey.
Just a comment on the clerk's reading. Mr. President, I understand that loan orders require two separate readings before it is sent over to the administration. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
It is, Counselor.
Okay, so if that's correct, then...
And withdrawn.
If that is correct, what authority does the administration have to act on this before it officially received it from the City Council? Because if we did not take the second reading theoretically and officially and legally, it's not before the administration.
Counselor, I would say that it has been withdrawn by the mayor, which he does have the authority to do, and therefore, that particular Doc at 1599 is no longer before the body.
Okay, with all due respect, I don't believe that the administration had the authority to do anything with it until we completed our work here on the City Council. Just a parenthetical note, but I think it is a very important one because I happen to agree with the good counselor from District Eight that this is a, the City Council is a co-equal partner in government. And if we allow the administration to intervene prior to the completion of the council's work, then in a very real sense, even by recognizing this, we're abdicating. Thank you very much.
The clerk informs me, and not to get into a debate over relative powers of the legislative and executive branches, that anybody who sponsors something can always withdraw it.
But we already voted on it.
Thank you. Doc at 1794 is referred to committee on Ways and Means. Clerk, Doc at 1795.
Doc at number 1795, message and order to reduce the FY14 appropriation for reserve for collective bargaining by $147,087 to provide funding for the Boston Public Health Commission for the FY14 increases contained within the collective bargaining agreement between the Boston Public Health Commission and the United Steel Workers of America, known as CINA, Local 9158. I'll read the second one also.
Please read the second one, Madam Clerk.
Doc at number 1796, message and order approving a supplemental appropriation of $147,087 for the Boston Public Health Commission, BPHC, for the FY14 cost items contained within the collective bargaining agreement between the Boston Public Health Commission and the United Steel Workers of America, CINA, Local 9185, filed in the office of the City Clerk, November 18, 2013.
Speaking on Doc at 1795 and 1796, Chair recognizes Counselor Mark Ciomo.
Move for suspension of the rules and passage.
Counselor Ciomo moves suspension of the rules and passage of Doc at 1795 and 1796.
The clerk read the order. Basically, we have a $147,087 appropriation for this contract. The monies will be taken from the FY14 Collective Bargaining Reserve, which has a current balance of 33 million, just shy of $34 million. The steel workers, CINA Local 9158, has approximately 35 employees that work in various roles at the Public Health Commission and include data managers, environmental health inspectors, and the Boston EMS deputies and superintendents. We have previously held six collective bargaining hearings to date, and all of the civilian agreements have followed the same basic pattern of wage increases and policy language. The contract follows a similar basic increase pattern as other contracts that we have approved retroactive to January 2011, FY11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, respectively, 01, 2, 3, 3, 3. There will be the lump sum of $54,630, which is the value of the wage delay that this local took as part of our FY11 budget, which still has a reserve balance of 4.9 million. It also includes similar policy language changes around sick leave monitoring, secondary employment, annual vaccines, and biweekly payroll. I recommend that this order passes.
Thank you, Counselor Ciomo. Counselor Ciomo, at this time, moves suspension of the rules and passage of Doc at 1795. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it. Doc at 1795 has passed. Counselor Ciomo, at this time, moves suspension of the rules and passage of Doc at 1796. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it. Doc at 1796 has passed. Madam Clerk, Doc at 1797.
1797, message and order authorizing the Police Commissioner to accept and expend a grant of $1,629,867.15 from the Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, funded under the FY14 Senator Charles E. Shannon Community Safety Initiative for the purpose of supporting the City of Boston's comprehensive strategy aimed at reducing gun, gang, and youth violence in the City of Boston by targeting services and intervention to at-risk and gang-affiliated youth within the neighborhoods.
Doc at 1797 will be referred to the Committee on Public Safety.
Doc at number 1798, message and order authorizing the Boston Center for Youth and Families to accept and expend a grant of $332,008.08 from the Boston Public Health Commission for the purpose of continued support for the Safe and Successful Youth Initiative.
Doc at 1798 will be referred to the Committee on Labor, Youth Affairs, and Health.
Doc at number 1799, message and order authorizing the Police Commissioner to accept and expend a grant of $5,000 from the Massachusetts Department of Public Health for the purpose of collecting and reporting data.
Counselor Ross moves suspension of the rules and passage of Doc at 1799. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it. Doc at 1799 has passed. Reports of public officers and others.
Doc at number 1801, notices received from Spectra Energy Regarding Algonquin Gas Transmission LLC, Algonquin Incremental Market Project, FERC, Doc at number PF13-16-000.
Doc at 1801 will be placed on file.
Mr. President, we did not place Mr. Senate Corporation Council's letter on file. I don't know if that's necessary, but technically, I've already read it into the record, so 1800 probably.
Do you want to just read the heading on 1800?
Sure.
Docket 1800, Madam Clerk.
1800, communication was received from William F. Senate Corporation Counsel Law Department regarding amendment taken by the City Council on November 6 on docket number 1599.
Docket 1800 will be placed on file. Docket 1802.
Docket 1802, notices received from the mayor of the appointment of William Evans as the interim police commissioner.
Docket 1802 will be placed on file.
Docket number 1803, communication was received from Keegan-Worland LLP regarding N-Star Electric Company, DPU 13-1777/ DPU 13-178.
Docket 1803 will be placed on file.
Docket number 1804, communication was received from Brian Decker regarding the city of Boston and the Boston Police Patrolmen's Association interest arbitrated award.
Docket 1804 will be placed on file.
Docket number 1805, notice was received from the mayor from the clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor and papers acted upon by the City Council at its meeting of October 23, 2013. Docket number, I'm sorry.
Docket 1805 will be placed on file.
Docket number 1806, notice was received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor and papers acted upon by the City Council at its meeting of October 30, 2013.
Docket 1806 will be placed on file.
Docket number 1807, communication was received from the city clerk of the filing by the Assessing Department and the Boston Redevelopment Authority. Oh, I'm sorry. That's the wrong one. It places on file. I'm very sorry. Communication was received from the city clerk of the filing of the Assessing Department and Boston Redevelopment Authority of the escrow agreement between APCV, Boston Hotel LLC.
Docket 1807 will be referred to the Committee on Economic Development and Planning. Reports of committees.
Docket number 1542, the Committee on Women in Healthy Communities, to which was referred on October 2, 2013. Docket number 1542, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend donations to help support Can Share 2013 in an amount not to exceed $110,000 to provide access to fresh food in the city, such as the Boston Bounty Buck Program, which enables supplemental nutrition assistance programs SNAP beneficiaries double their buying power at Boston farmers' markets and greatly increases access to fresh, healthy food. Submits a report recommending it ought to pass.
The Chair recognizes Counselor Ayanna Pressley on docket 1542. Counselor Pressley moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1542. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it. Docket 1542 has passed. Chair recognizes Counselor Jackson.
Seeing as good as I look today, Mr. President, is because I have been doing the SNAP challenge. And I have been living, this is my seventh day, I've been living on $4.50 a day. And let me tell you, Mr. President, as someone who stands around my size, it is a very, very difficult task. This ability to...
It's difficult on your friends.
Okay. This, this ability to get more and also to get healthier foods is something that is in dire need. We know that at the federal level, we have folks who are unwilling to, to do their job right now and are playing, playing games with people's food and their access to food. This is a very important issue, and it's one where a lot of folks go and have to do what I've been doing, which is basically living, living on carbs. And when going to the store, I spent $30.20 for a week of food, and the only thing that I was thinking about was not nutrition, was simply whether or not I was going to have enough. And so, a program like this where people are able to go to farmers' markets, get healthy food, and there's a multiplier there is something that's, that's very significant. And I want to thank Counselor Pressley for the great work that she does in, in this committee, and it's something that I think we all need to think about. At, at present, it's down now at the federal level to $1.76 per, per meal, per person, per day. These are really difficult choices. 20% of the people in our city of Boston are considered food instability, right? That means they're hungry, and there's a lot that we need to continue to do, and programs like this allow us to do it. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Counselor Jackson. Docket 1542 has passed. Madam Clerk, would you read the several public safety dockets that are at hand, and we'll then turn it over to Counselor Ross.
Thank you, Mr. President. Docket 1631, the Committee on Public Safety, to which was referred on October 23, 2013. Docket number 1631, message and order authorizing the police commissioner to accept and expend a grant of $2,757,382 from the U.S. Department of Justice Assistance, funded under the FY13 Second Chance Act Adult Reentry Demonstration Program for the purpose of funding the Boston Reentry Initiative. Submits a report recommending the order ought to pass. Docket number 1632, the Committee on Public Safety, to which was referred on October 23, 2013. Docket number 1632, a message and order authorizing the police commissioner to accept and expend a grant of $484,229 from the U.S. Department of Justice for the FY13 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, known as JAG, for the purpose of submitting crime prevention and law enforcement. Submits a report recommending the order ought to pass. Docket number 1633, the Committee on Public Safety, to which was referred on October 23, 2013. Docket number 1633, message and order authorizing the police commissioner to accept and expend a grant of $200,000 from the U.S. Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance, funded under the FY13 Justice and Mental Health Collaboration Program. Submits a report recommending the order ought to pass. Docket number 1634, the Committee on Public Safety, to which was referred on October 23, 2013. Docket number 1634, message and order authorizing the police commissioner to accept and expend $175,000 of the FY13 State and Community Development Division Grant from the Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention, OJJDP, used to support the Development Enhancement of Youth Violence Prevention Plan. Submits a report recommending the order ought to pass. Docket number 1635, the Committee on Public Safety, to which was referred on October 23, 2013. Docket number 1635, message and order authorizing the police department to accept and expend the FY2013 Traffic Enforcement Grand Funds of $56,000 from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security Highway Safety Division. Submits a report recommending the order ought to pass. Docket number 1636, the Committee on Public Safety, to which was referred on October 23, 2013. Docket number 1636, message and, message or, message and order authorizing the police commissioner to accept and expend the FY13 Violence Against Women Act, VAWA, stop grant of $42,400 from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security to support the BPD Civilian Violence Advocate. Submits a report recommending the order ought to pass. Docket number 1637, the Committee on Public Safety, to which was referred on October 23, 2013. Docket number 1637, message and order authorizing the police commissioner to accept and expend an FY13 Port Security Grant of $24,816 from the United States Department of Homeland Security for the purpose of providing supply items to port areas for the protection of critical port infrastructure from terrorism. Submits a report recommending the order ought to pass.
Speaking on dockets 1631 through and including 1637, Chair recognizes Chair of Public Safety, Counselor Mike Ross.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to just start off by thanking my colleague, Counselor Ayanna Pressley, for attending the hearing. We went through all seven of these matters. The most pertinent is the largest. It's a matching grant, so it's over $5 million of dollars are going to be dedicated to reentry, reentry of people coming out of our prison population. This is a grant, I just want to flag this for my colleagues. Laura Gross is now running this Department of, I guess, a reentry-type function in her department. She needs to be present and, and in our communities and talking to the people on the front line of the prison reentry recidivism movement. And she said she would. It's $5 million in resources. They're going to be put out into the community to prevent people from the revolving door of going right back to prison. The other matters are smaller, just, you know, one, the 1632 is a formula grant of just $484,000. The docket 1633 is, deals with EDPs, which is a mental health resource of $200,000. Docket 1634 is a capacity building grant for youth violence prevention for $170,000, just over. Docket 1635 is a traffic safety grant for seatbelt and drunk driving, mobilization efforts for our Boston Police Department. Docket 1636 is a $42,000 grant that will fund a civilian domestic violent, violence advocate. And docket 1637 is for the harbor master, who agreed in the hearing that he has the best job in the city, and it is for night vision capacity, as well as enhancement to one of the vessels to include a radar dome equipment on the vessel. I would move passage of all these dockets today. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Ross. Counselor Ross, at this time, moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1631. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it. Docket 1631 has passed. Counselor Ross, at this time, moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1632. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it. Docket 1632 has passed. Counselor Ross, at this time, moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1633. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it. Docket 1633 has passed. Counselor Ross, at this time, moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1634. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it. The docket 1634 has passed. Counselor Ross, at this time, moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1635. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1635 has passed. Counselor Ross, at this time, moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1636. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it. Docket 1636 has passed. Counselor Ross, at this time, moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1637. All those in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it. Docket 1637 has passed. Madam Clerk, docket 1699.
Docket 1699, the Committee on City and Neighborhood Services and Veterans Affairs, to which was referred on October 23, 2013. Docket number 1699, message and order for confirmation of the reappointment of Kathleen Douglas Stone as a member of the Boston Water and Sewer Commission for a term expiring January 1, 2018. Submits a report recommending the order ought to be confirmed.
Chair recognizes City Councilor Sal Lamatina on docket 1699.
Thank you, Mr. President. I urge my colleagues to vote in support of the confirmation of Kathleen Douglas Stone. As many of you know, she was a former chief of environmental services, and she's been on the Boston Water and Sewer Commission Board for 19 years. She certainly has the experience on that and expertise, so I urge my colleagues to vote in support. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Lamatina. Counselor Lamatina, at this time, moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket... Chair recognizes Counselor Felix Arroyo on docket 1699.
Thank you. Today, I'm going to vote in support, but I just want folks to, I wanted just to show my little bit of caution here. This expires 2018. You know, we know that we're in a transition, and the city of Boston has made a decision of who will be leading the city up until 2018. And I just ask counselors to really think about that when we're moving forward appointments for committees and ask if the shoe was on either foot, how you would feel, and what was the mandate of the city that happened on November 5 of this year. I recognize that we have administration until the end of this year, but we have administration thereafter as well. And, and I, I'm going to vote for this, but this isn't the first time I saw this, and, you know, I'm not sure what attention I'm bringing on myself right now, but I'm going to ask folks to really think that through when you chair committees and you're moving these things, if you think it's actually appropriate to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Arroyo. Counselor Lamatina, at this time, moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1699. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The ayes have it. 1699 has passed. Counselor Baker, do you just wish to be recorded in the negative on 1699? Please record Counsel Baker in the negative on docket 1699. Madam Clerk, matters recently heard for possible action.
Docket number 1514, message and ordinance amending CBC ordinances, Chapter 7-4, Parks and Recreation Department, by inserting a new subsection, 7-4.14, smoking prohibited in parks.
Chair recognizes the Chair of Government Operations, Counselor Matt O'Malley on docket 1514.
Thank you, Mr. President. Docket number 1514 reads a message and ordinance to promote clean and healthy parks, amending the Boston Code ordinances, Chapter 7-4, Parks and Recreation Department. It was sponsored by Mayor Menino, was introduced at the council's weekly meeting on September 25, and referred to the Committee on Government Operations. A hearing was held yesterday. I'd like to thank Counselor Sal Lamatina and Counselor Charles Yancey for their participation in the hearing. Testifying from the administration were Parks and Recreation Commissioner Tony Pollak, Margaret Reed, representing the Public Health Commission, and Bernard O'Rourke, Superintendent of the Boston Police Department, who sort of explained the, some enforcement aspect of it. The intent of the legislation is to protect Boston, Boston's parks and to ensure that parks and recreation places are safe, clean, and healthy for all residents. The docket would amend the city of Boston code by adding a new subsection, 7-4.14, which would prohibit smoking, including the smoking of marijuana in public parks or other public places under the control of the Parks and Recreation Commission. For the purposes of this docket, smoking is defined as inhaling, exhaling, burning, or carrying any lighted cigar, cigarette, pipe, or other lighted vaporized substance in any manner or form, including marijuana used for medical or any other purpose. The measure, this measure would grant the authority to the Parks Recreation Commission to implement the ordinance. The violation of the ordinance is a fine of $250 per offense that will be enforced by the Boston Police Department, as well as the Boston Park Rangers Association. Testifying in support of this, a number of people, there was no opposition, but just it was Boston Park Rangers Association, Beacon Health Civic Association, representatives from the Emerald Necklace Conservancy, Friends of the Public Garden, Franklin Park Coalition, Boston Association of Community Health, as well as several residents and known park enthusiasts, Bill Loesch from Dorchester, someone that we all know, Bill Laish. And essentially, what this would do is finally codify the law that would ban smoking in our parks and our open spaces. This is something this body has talked about before. We had some signs that were erected, particularly in the tot lots, to this very matter. This is something that other cities and towns throughout the Commonwealth have been doing. This is not a new thing. In fact, the first municipality to ban smoking in parks was in California in 1975. In the year 2001, almost one quarter of Bostonians, 24%, were self-identified as smokers. That number fell to 16% in 2013. There is no doubt that there have been many issues that have... There is no doubt that there have been many issues that have helped bring that, the price of cigarettes, new intelligence on public health, the fact that this mayor, to his credit, banned smoking in bars and restaurants, is something many members of this body that were leaders on. I know Councilor Yancey has been pushing this from his first days on the council, of ways to ban cigarette samples, for example. It's a public health issue. It's all about cleanliness. We have all know parks in our districts where cigarette butts are abundant. This is the right thing to do, and it's why I think that we should support it. Like to note, Councilor Linehan has talked about this issue as well, and this is very similar to some of the ideas that he's talked about before. Basically, what it will do is Boston will again lead the way. Any public space, so we're talking about parks, we're talking about cemeteries, for example, the golf course, different areas that are public space, smoking will be prohibited. You can obviously, if you are a smoker at a kids' little league game, for example, you can go to the sidewalk. That is not under this thing. It does not ban smoking outside, it's just simply in parks. As the law stands right now, you could be at a, you know, a kids' little league game or a tot lot at a playground, smoking a cigarette butt. The public health, the secondhand smoke, although it's outside, it still has an effect. I'd like to really commend the mayor for his work on this, and Commissioner Pollak and everybody, and members here who've been involved. It's a great thing. I urge all of you to vote favorably for this initiative. I look forward to passage. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor O'Malley. Chair recognizes Councilor Bill Linehan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I filed an order a few months back regarding smoking of marijuana, and I want to commend the chair on moving this matter that has been presented by the administration. The particular order that I put forth only addressed the matter of marijuana. The same fines in the ballpark, the same ability to enforce is applied. So I'll be supporting this, and I commend the administration for continuing to work with the city council on these matters. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Linehan. Councilor O'Malley at this time moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1514. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Docket 1514 has passed.
Docket number 1037, order approving a petition for special law regarding the return authority of liquor licenses process to the city of Boston.
Docket 1037 remains in the Committee on Government Operations. You wish to speak, counselor?
And our friend, Councilor Presley. This is the second working session I've really been the leader on. We will have one more, at least one more working session. We're really making some great headway, we're making sure that everyone's involved. I think probably five of you were participating yesterday in the working session. We will continue to do so, and thank you again, Councilor Presley, for your leadership on this. Stay tuned.
Thank you, Councilor O'Malley. Madam Clerk, motions, orders, and resolutions.
Docket number 1808, Councilor Murphy offered the following order that pursuant to Chapter 40, Section 56, the residential factor in the city of Boston for FY 2013 shall be the minimum residential factor as determined by the Commissioner of Revenue pursuant to Mass General Law's Chapter 58, Section 1A, and be it further that pursuant to Chapter 403 of the Acts of 2000, a residential exemption in the amount of value equal to 30% of the average assessed value of all Class 1 residential parcels in the city of Boston be and hereby is approved for fiscal year 2014.
The chair recognizes the president, Stephen Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just briefly, every year, city council takes this up in late November, early December, whereby, under the law, under Mass General Law's Chapter 58, Section 1A, we are required to set the tax rate, and our tax rate has two rates, a commercial rate and a residential rate. And we are electing once again to put the minimum residential factor that we are authorized under law to put forward for the people who reside in the neighborhoods of Boston, meaning that the maximum factor is on the commercial side of this thing. We're also allowing for a maximum 30% exemption, residential exemption, which the law allows. So we're giving as much relief for residential property taxpayers as state law allows. I'm urging this go to Ways and Means for appropriate hearing, the council to decide on it before the end of the close of business 2013. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please assign 1808 to Ways and Means.
Docket number 1809. Councilor Lamatina offered the following order for hearing regarding flood zone maps and insurance rates.
I recognize myself. Thank you, Mr. President. Before I begin, I would like to ask that, to add Councilor Linehan's name to this and Councilor Baker to this order for a hearing. Last week, as you know, FEMA just came out with a new flood insurance map that's going to really impact our neighborhoods of Dorchester, South Boston, East Boston, North End, Childstown, and the whole downtown area. And I don't know if you saw, if you saw the maps, where I live in East Boston, where my mother lives, she lives near Santapio's, and that is blocks and blocks away from the Boston Harbor. And there are hundreds and hundreds of homes now and businesses that will be in this flood zone. So I'm really concerned about that. I know the administration is looking to hire a consultant to look at the maps and to try to work with the city and the residents and the businesses. This could add thousands and thousands of dollars on insurance for a lot of these homeowners. And I'm really concerned about the impacts that it's going to do, particularly to the poor homeowners in my neighborhoods and some of the businesses. So that's one concern I have. Another concern I have is FEMA has this deficit for $24 billion, and I just feel like they've been trying to make up the backs of the poor people in our city. So it's something that we all should be concerned about. There will be meetings in the neighborhoods after January, so just want to bring that up to your attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Lamatina. Chair recognizes Councilor Bill Linehan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just rise to commend the author and for allowing me to join in with him. This is a very important matter for a significant portion of our city, and there will be economic impact and hardship for folks. So I look forward to a hearing and action. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Linehan. Chair recognizes Councilor Tito Jackson.
President, I — Councilor Lamatina has actually struck a chord. As many of you on April 15 were taken aback by what happened, I got on, I came to City Hall and actually went upstairs and got on the phones. And I think there's an underlying issue here in that Hurricane Sandy struck not that much. And I think the underlying issue is, are we prepared, and do we have real disaster preparedness in the city of Boston? I would submit to you, Mr. President, that there's a lot of things that the city needs to do to get our city in order. We have two data centers. Both of them are wonderfully located in the city of Boston, which is a great thing about keeping those dollars there. But, Mr. President, both of them are below sea level, which is probably not a good thing. And I know that there's some changes that are going to be happening there in that department. So I think Councilor Lamatina has done a really good thing in that we should further look into disaster preparedness for the city of Boston to make sure that we don't end up like New York or New Jersey, who we saw struck by Sandy. That could be, that could easily be us, and we definitely want to make sure that we're prepared.
Thank you, Councilor Jackson. Chair recognizes Councilor Charles Yancey.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. It was approximately a year ago when I hosted a hearing on climate change, and we discussed this very issue. And while I know this is in reference to insurance rates, and that's a critical issue, it's obviously related to the potential climatic catastrophe that could take place in the city of Boston if, as the previous speaker mentioned, a sandy-type storm were to hit us. So I would like to commend the maker of this hearing order and ask that my name be added. Thank you.
Please add the name of Councilor Charles Yancey. Docket 1809 will be referred to, and also add the name of Councilor Tito Jackson. Docket 1809 will be referred to Committee on City and Neighborhood Services. Madam Clerk, personnel orders.
Docket 1810, Councilor Murphy for Councilor Baker offered the following order.
Councilor Baker moves suspension rules and passage of docket 1810. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Docket 1810 has passed. The clerk informs me there are two late-file matters in her hands, which in absence of objection, will be added to today's agenda. Hearing no objection, the matters are so added, the clerk will read the first addition to the agenda.
Offered by Councilor Stephen J. Murphy. Should I read the first and last, Mr. President?
First and last.
Whereas in fiscal year 2012, Mayor Menino and the Boston City Council adopted Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 59, Section 5, 56, a local option program that offered National Guardsmen and reservists who are on active duty serving in foreign countries a tax exemption up to 100% on real and personal property. Ordered that pursuant to the General Law's Chapter 59, Section 5, Subsection 56, the city of Boston shall extend the property tax exemption of up to 100% for the active members of the National Guard or reservist serving in foreign countries for an additional period of two years, beginning in fiscal year 2014.
The first late-file matter will be referred to the Committee on Ways and Means.
Offered by Councilor Stephen J. Murphy, ordered that effective Saturday, November 9, 2013.
Councilor Lamatina moves suspension rules and passage of the personnel order in question. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Personnel order has passed. Is there anybody wishing to remove a matter from the green sheets at this time? Chair recognizes —
No.
Oh, okay. Jumped the gun. There are no takers for the green sheets. There are two late-file matters, which in absence of objection, will be added to today's consent agenda. Hearing no objection, the matters are so added. Chair moves adoption of the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Consent agenda is adopted. Chair recognizes Councilor Tito Jackson.
Permission to make a brief —
Request unanimous consent?
Yes, sir.
Granted. What are friends for?
Yes. Mr. President, I rise to invite all of the councilors, as well as the viewers, to my annual turkey giveaway. We will be, we've been very blessed this year. Our sponsors will allow us to feed over 1,000 people. We will be distributing over 1,000 turkeys this year. This will be held today from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Roxbury, I'm sorry, the Yawkey Boys and Girls Club at 115 Warren Street. This, and as Councilor Presley brought forth legislation, we are in a time of increased need when it comes to this issue of hunger. There's folks who wear suits and ties and wear dress suits to work on a regular basis who are now going to the Greater Boston Food Bank. It's something that's touching the lives of so many friends, families, and neighbors and constituents. And so we have an opportunity to double what we did last year. We did 500, and this year, we will have an opportunity to do 1,000, and we had some folks come forward, and now we're able to do sides. And I'm just really proud to be part of a giving circle that connects people who want to give with folks who are in need, and we value both of those folks. So again, everyone is invited to come out, and I definitely have a lot of heavy lifting and work. It is today from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Yawkey Boys and Girls Club, 115, and please have folks get there early. It is definitely first come, first served. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilor Jackson. Chair recognizes Councilor Charles Yancey.
Unanimous consent to make a brief statement?
Please proceed, Councilor.
Thank you. Mr. President, and my beloved colleagues, there's going to be a hearing in these chambers tomorrow, that's November 21, 2013, in the Labor, Youth Affairs, and Health Committee to consider really the events of October 8, 2013, which was traumatic for me, and I'm sure for every one of you, when our children were not picked up that morning. As I mentioned, when I filed a hearing order, I personally went down to one of the yards to find out what the heck was going on. And I learned that not only were there some grievances, but that the Veolia Corporation actually locked the gates after 11 o'clock, even though the workers expressed to me and others a desire to pick the children up that afternoon, not the Wednesday morning. So the hearing tomorrow evening at 6:00 p.m. will give Veolia an opportunity to explain what happened, as well as the school bus drivers. Now, there are a lot of issues entangled in this, most importantly, of course, the public safety of our children, but also workers' rights. And it's apparent from discussions I've had with members of the union that there are a lot of public safety issues with regards to the operation of school buses, and some of these issues are being ignored by the company, including radios that are not functioning properly, buses put on the road even though they have some serious mechanical and other issues. And I request, and on part of Veolia, that certain bus drivers use their cell phones to communicate emergencies when that's clearly against the contract and public safety, but they do that because in many instances, the radios aren't working. So there are a lot of complicated issues, and I feel it is very important for all sides to get the issues out on the table, not just to prevent something like this from happening again, but also to make sure that the city of Boston, which is a worker-friendly city, is in a position to protect our workers as well as our children. So I encourage all of our members to join us, and I thank the chair of the committee for agreeing to convene it as expeditiously as he has.
Thank you, Councilor Yancey. At this time, I'd ask all in attendance to please rise, all councilors and all guests, as the city council stands to adjourn. The chair moves when the council adjourns, it will do so in memory of the following individuals. For Councilor Lamatina, Anna Humana, who was the wife of former Senator Mario Humana from East Boston; for Councilor Linehan, Peter Nowyokas; for Councilor Siomo, Douglas F. Sonny Miller; and Fred Siliberto, Fred the Barber; for Councilor Connolly, Andrew McGee; for Councilor Presley, Gareth Kincaid; and for all members of the Boston City Council, for Patrick Rogers from the Boston Police Department. If I could have a moment of silence for all of those. The chair moves that when the council adjourns, it will do so, I see your light, Council Baker, it will do so again, to meet again on Wednesday, December 4, 2013, at 12:00 noon. Before we adjourn, Councilor Baker has a request.
I would just like to add, it is the 50th anniversary of John F. Kennedy's assassination also. I'd like to add that.
Okay. Councilor Baker adds the 50th assassination of the 35th President, John Fitzgerald Kennedy, which was, which is Friday, November 22. So the chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it will do so to meet again on Wednesday, December 4, at 12:00 noon. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The council stands adjourned. Thank you.
We agree.[1795.26][1795.26]
We agree.[1699.73]